Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. In attendance today, we have of course myself, Mark Conway, Chair of the Committee, and Representative the 4th District, Councilman Burnett representing the 8th District, Councilwoman Porter representing the 10th District, and Councilwoman Ramos representing the 14th District. And Representative the Office of the President, I've got Tiffany Macklin in the back, and I've got Preston Lewis up front. And representing the Mayor's Office, I've got Nina Themelis. This afternoon, the Committee will have a hearing on LO-23-0038 Legislative Oversight Supporting Returning Citizens for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, Baltimore Police Department, the Baltimore State Attorney's Office of Maryland, and the Maryland Probation and Pre-Trial Services Office to discuss the way in which the City of Baltimore can support returning citizens and prevent recidivism, and assess the effectiveness of the wraparound services the city provides to community members who have been previously incarcerated. This bill was introduced on June 12, 2023, and it was sponsored by myself. So today's hearing is on supporting returning citizens. And before we get into the meeting in earnest, I want to extend my heartfelt thoughts to the Morgan State University community after last night's shooting. It's tough to see yet another celebration, a joyful celebration unfortunately interrupted by gunfire. So I just want to acknowledge that. I'm going to give the Police Department an opportunity to tell us a little bit about what happened and provide a brief update on the incident, where things stand. Given this is an active investigation, of course, the Police Department can only say so much, but we'll have an opportunity to turn to the Police Department on that shortly. Turning back to the topic at hand, I want to thank the agencies who are here today for their participation, especially Secretary Scruggs and her team from the Maryland Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services. Secretary Scruggs is joining us virtually, and other members of her department are here in person to present on their efforts on reentry, recidivism, and returning citizens. We also have city agencies, including the Police Department, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, here to talk about their topic and their work and how they intersect with this issue going forward. I want to acknowledge Councilman Torrance, although he's not here, he's run a little bit late for the work that he's doing on this issue. You know, I think it's a really important one, and he acknowledges that as well. I know he may join us shortly. Our goal here today is to discuss how the city can support returning citizens, prevent recidivism, and assess the effectiveness of wraparound services that the city and state provide to community members who've been previously incarcerated. And when we look at what I call the life cycle of crime, reentry is either the first or the last step when incarcerated folks who have been released from prison return to their community. We're here today to talk about what successful reentry looks like. And you know, it's an effective combination of wraparound services, resources, and attempts to remove barriers and hurdles that would ordinarily prevent returning citizens from reintegrating back into their communities as productive, healthy, happy citizens. This looks like job fairs, GED or diploma programs, mental health, and addiction treatment services, childcare services, job preparation and training. So you know, really looking forward to getting into this conversation, really looking forward to, you know, healthy back and forth, and really looking forward to hearing from Secretary Scruggs. So first, we're going to go to the Police Department, they're going to provide us a quick update, we'll hear briefly from them. I want to acknowledge Councilman Cohen, who's just joined the meeting, and I will turn it over to BPD.
Good morning, Sir. Acting Deputy Commissioner Kevin Jones, on behalf of the PC and our agency, we also give our deepest sympathy in reference to not only the five victims, but the Morgan State community and the community in large. We do know around 9:30 last night, there was an incident coming out initially as a discharging, and then it was elevated to an active shooter based on events that occurred. It was quickly determined that the incident was not an active shooter, although the community was placed on a lockdown to remain in shelter in place. The swift and dedicated work of our SWAT members, both male and female, of searching methodically every room of that 10-story building aided in us to not only return the community into its normal state, moving the shelter in place, but also identifying multiple crime scenes within that community. We know within that footprint, based on camera footage, talking to witnesses, we do have a pretty good understanding of what went on in that incident, that it was not a targeted event, it was not an active shooter, but more as we are finding out an incident between individuals with poor conflict resolution and the availability of guns. We know events like this can rattle a community, and it is up to us as public safety leaders to not only bring the university back to a sense of calm, but the urgency of getting that noble institution back where it is through transparency and working with not only Morgan State Police, but quickly deploying our allied agencies from Maryland State Police, the FBI and ATF into a unified command, which I was a part of that night until early in the morning. So we look forward to this investigation through our investigative steps. We're definitely making progress in this, continuing to work with Morgan State Police and Chief Hatch.
Thank you, Deputy. And Councilwoman, anything you want to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving us the opportunity to just touch on this briefly. The shooting occurred literally on the boundary between the 14th and the 3rd. And so Councilman Dorsey and I have been in contact, consistent contact. I was on-site yesterday, mostly talking to parents who had come to the site to try to figure out what was going on. And you know, just being there for our, the parents and the university and the first responders. We will be sending out information as much as we can when it's available. This is a really bad thing that happened, and it's during homecoming week. This is not the first time something has happened during homecoming week in, at Morgan. So there's a lot of soul-searching that I think all of us have to do relative to that, but I think the larger issue is also, and we also don't know whether the person or people who did this had illegal guns or licensed guns, but the issue is also guns. And so while I believe and support what the mayor was saying in terms of we've got to have some help from Congress, I do not have any faith in Congress right now, period. And so I'm hoping that we can work, continue to work with our local, state, and federal partners to really figure out what's the best way to make sure that illegal guns are not coming into our city while we're doing all the other important work of gun violence reduction strategy, or the group violence reduction strategy, working with our young people so that they're, you know, not wanting to solve problems with guns, it's all of that. So last night, I was honored to play the role of trying to console and help people, but now I'm pissed. And so I think we really need to take some action, and I thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate, you know, you being able to respond late last night. You know, I think we're all on the phone trying to figure out what was going on. I want to thank the Police Department for giving us an update on what's been going on. I think, you know, communication and transparency about what we can share about the moment is really important for the city so that folks know what's going on. And I know I had an opportunity to talk with the Commissioner right before this meeting about how we're thinking about the rest of the weekend, noting we want people to enjoy homecoming, we want them to do so safely, and we're thinking about what role we can have in helping make sure that that happens. And I know you guys are working very closely with the school. So just want to thank you guys, and you know.
And Mr. Chair, just one last thing, that Councilman Dorsey and I have given our full support to the Morgan community, whatever they need, we're there for them. So we're happy to step in at any time, whenever anything's needed. Thanks.
I think that the whole council probably would extend that. So I want to get back on topic. I know we have a very important guest who's dedicated time, Secretary Scruggs. I want to turn it over to you. I know you guys have a presentation you want to jump into. Secretary Scruggs, are you there?
I am. Good afternoon, Chairman. Thank you for having us. I'm going to have my chief of staff pull the presentation up, and let me know if you all can see it.
We can see it, yes.
Okay.
We were able to see it. There we go. We see, not the presentation mode, we see the sort of slide.
Okay, hold on, he's going to change it to.
Yes.
No?
I did?
Is that better?
That's perfect.
Great. So first, thank you for having me, Mr. Chair. DPSCS is excited that you all are interested in our reentry efforts and understanding that of the 17,000 incarcerated men and women in Maryland's prisons, many of them, the majority of them, are coming back to Baltimore City. So it is very imperative that we receive your buy-in and your support to make sure that they have smooth transitions back into our community. I'm going to go to the first slide. So basically, the first thing that I want to make sure everybody understands is that reentry services are provided at every facility that we have. It's across all of our facilities and all of our security levels, whether you are a maximum-security inmate, or a pre-release inmate, or a home detention inmate. Reentry services affect you. Over, if you just look at the graph, it'll break down for you based on our various classifications, those various percentages of reentry citizens and populations that we currently have. Some 2,257 incarcerated individuals will be returning to Maryland communities in the next 18 months. And as I go through the presentation, I have broken down directly what's coming back to Baltimore City for you to see that. So as part of our reentry and release plans, we do a home plan. Each individual prior to them going home sits with a case manager or reentry specialist to do a home plan, and that home plan gets verified. Within that home plan, we're looking at what they did while they were currently incarcerated. Did they program? Did they get their high school diploma? Did they graduate from college? Did they get other careers in technical education or occupational skills and training? Have they received national accreditation and certificates for various types of industry-standard employment opportunities so that we can start to look to connect them in the community to those jobs? We also look to see and ensure that they have a home to go to. You probably know that one of our bigger challenges is the sex offender. The sex offender that is released into the community cannot go back to his family that lives in public housing. And oftentimes, there are conditions of his release that don't allow him or her to be around a school or other things associated that are near to children. So oftentimes, there are challenges with that particular population in finding them housing and placement, but we continue to work diligently to do that. 99% of our individuals that we are touching to go back home have a valid home plan. And while that 1% seems very small, it can be very challenging again, just because of the charges that they're coming back home with, just because of the absence of family connections, and sometimes because of the reluctance of community to give them a second chance, especially in employment opportunities. This particular slide, I'm happy to direct you to our website whenever you want to see it. We update it regularly, but it actually shows our releases and how they are broken down. If you look, based on our jurisdictions, Baltimore City, of course, has the most returning citizens coming back to the community. Baltimore City has been leading that for probably at least the last four years. It was Baltimore County and Prince George's County were kind of running that connect before, but Baltimore City is again leading with the number of returning citizens. We are unique because the Maryland Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services runs the Baltimore City Detention Center. We've been doing that since 94, unlike the other municipalities where they are independently, the jails are independently run by those particular jurisdictions. So what you see in the box are individual jurisdictions that we have gone into MOU agreements with, that if the incarcerated individual is within a year of release, that we can send them back to the detention center, and we can start to have them work and program in the community directly from that detention center so that they can then have a smooth transition, and they're not coming straight from prison back to community. That is something that I hope that we can begin to do in Baltimore City with your help because we, as I said, run the Baltimore City Detention Center, so we have individuals actually in our care that are 18 months or less that we are maintaining and not sending to prison, that we know that are coming back to Baltimore City. And we look for gainful employment for them, we look for opportunities, we make sure that we clear them so that they, we know that they're safe to come to the community. We're not going to send out individuals that we deem unsafe, or that need restrictive housing, or have maybe other challenges that may present public safety issues. So we do vet everyone that we send out. Not going to spend a lot of time on this because I think we all know this, but this is just our DPSCS overview. Our reentry starts at arrest, from the time you walk in the door, through the time that you are either mandatory release, placed on parole or probation, still under our supervision. We strive to make sure that reentry reconnects families, that those individuals are provided specific community resources through the home plan that I told you about, that they are gaining skills that they can use that are successful in community relationships so that we know that if the community needs a specific type of employment opportunity, we try to ensure that we're offering those types of opportunities. And we work very closely with the Maryland Department of Labor to do that. Let's go to the next. So just to give you a snapshot of FY 2023, of the 3,095 individuals released statewide, 92% of them received reentry planning services. Those were services from either a case manager or a reentry specialist within the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services. 70% of them needed additional reentry, so we connected them with our social workers, our social work department here within the department, that actually helped them with social work support. And 67% were connected to a reentry navigator. The reentry navigator is employed by the Maryland Department of Labor, and they work in various jurisdictions throughout the state, and their primary responsibility is to work at the American Job Centers throughout the state to provide job readiness for those individuals. Some of the other things that Maryland Department of Public Safety has begun to do, actually when I was Assistant Secretary for Programs and Services, we started to really take a robust look at reentry and say, what can we do to ensure that there is a continuity of care that the individual receives as they transition back into the community? So we began the Medicaid enrollment. My social workers actually helped facilitate that. Within the first 120 days prior to their release, we enroll them with that effort. And if they are on medications, we are providing a 60-day supply of medication and connect them to community resources that will allow them to continue to get their meds. We work with the Maryland Motor Vehicle Administration. We have a MOU with them that allows us to take their Maryland ID while they are still incarcerated and provide that to them upon release. If for some reason they get missed because maybe they got released at court, they are allowed to go to MVA, and for $3, they can get a Maryland ID based on showing their R card that they were most recently released from prison. My mental health unit continues to work with community health providers and behavioral health providers to ensure that we are connecting those individuals that need those types of resources to make sure that they are stable while they're in the community. Social work also completes applications for SNAP and for housing assistance. I've already briefly talked with you about labor and how we use the American Job Centers to help with career placement. That is an area where we could definitely expand if we would get more employers to just take an opportunity and take a chance on some of these young men and women that are coming back out and place them in careers in which they have successfully achieved degrees and/or certificates in. We are doing financial literacy training because that's one of the big things that we realized was needed, that many of the incarcerated populations seem to be lacking. We work with numerous mediation service programmers that actually come in and do mediation between both the victim and the incarcerated soon-to-be-released individual and their families. We also work along with the Social Security Administration to ensure that they have a social security card when they leave, and the Veteran Services Administration. I can tell you that the new Secretary of Veterans Affairs, Mr. Tony Woods, has really stepped up to the plate in assisting me with this to ensure that any of our veterans that are being released are signed up to receive the veteran benefits that they are eligible for. So we continue to move forward in those efforts. Education is big for us, and many of us know that it is a key to success. And while not everyone may not be degree-oriented, there is some type of skill base in education and literacy that can definitely move them in the right direction. Because of that, two years ago, we increased the number of hours required within the Maryland Department of Public Safety for you to get a GED or high school diploma. They now have to sit for 240 classroom hours to receive that. If you just look at our numbers in a glance, unfortunately, COVID slowed us down into 19, 20, 21, just because we were on pause and we had minimum movement in our facilities, and therefore our teachers and principals were working either virtually, and in some instances where we had outbreak days that they could not come in. But despite that, you can look that our numbers are rising, and if you come into Maryland's prison without a high school diploma or GED, you are required to be enrolled in school. I am happy to recognize that while I understand when they're with us, we have their attention, unlike in the community. The GED pass rate behind the walls is 89%, and that is higher than the community pass rate that we have right now in the state of Maryland. I've talked briefly about our partnership with Maryland Department of Labor. That is very essential to especially those that don't want to take pathways to go to, say, a bachelor's degree after receiving, or a AA degree after receiving their high school diploma. So there are technical, educational programs that allow them to enroll and offer them opportunities so that they can get national certifications and industry-recognized credentials. They are spread across 10 of our institutions right now, and they are offered through Maryland Department of Labor. We also have a entity within DPSCS that works in conjunction with those programs, and that's the Maryland Correctional Enterprise Program for Training. This slide just shows you some of those actual occupational training programs that we are currently offering throughout our facilities. Anything from auto body repair to introduction to Word and Excel, office technology, woodworking, finishing, carpentry, small engine repair, and a number of individuals take these opportunities and become certified in one or several of these various programs. Again, this just gives you a overview of our completion rates. And again, you can see highlighted in yellow is where we kind of fell back down, years that were affected by COVID, as I said again, because COVID again, because of education and some changes we had to do just because of minimum movement to keep individuals safe. But I'm still proud to say that we are on the road to, again, being very successful and high in our numbers, especially with our national certifications and our industry-recognized credentials, with individuals actually receiving those types of certificates so they can come back in the community and be employed. One of the highlights of what we've done was actually supported by a grant through the Opiate Operation Command Center that was given to Maryland Department of Labor, and it provided funding for us to support a Certified Peer Recovery Specialist Program. We thought it was essential because last July was the first time since 2014 that the department had a contract for substance abuse and to provide substance abuse support for our incarcerated men and women. This program under the Operational Command Center was expanded to nine additional facilities. And to date, I'm proud to say that 17 of those men that actually took this certification, this is a 600-hour certification, these men actually passed the board exam to become Certified Peer Recovery Specialists. Three of them have been released, and they are working in our community right now as Peer Recovery Specialists. We have had them to come back and speak with the men that continue to be part of this program. The program has really helped the climate within our facilities. It helps to keep the climate calm, it helps to give those individuals not involved in the program an outlet and someone to talk to that they can actually relate to. So it has been very successful. Another success story was the restoration of the Pell Grant for those incarcerated men and women. It had not been available to them since 1994. And July 1 of 2023, we were able to use the Pell Grant for higher education opportunities behind the walls. And just to give you a few of some of those higher educations, one is Goucher. Goucher is our champion, they have been with us since 2012. I am proud to say that earlier this year, we graduated seven individuals from Goucher College with a bachelor's degree in American Studies. Some of them are still incarcerated. We also had individuals that got released while they were still in the Goucher program. They have since gone on to continue their education at Goucher. One young lady is currently working for Goucher and continuing her education. Another young man has actually graduated and landed a job on Capitol Hill. So I say to you, you know, educational opportunity is key, and we are proud to help lead the way to success for those individuals coming back. University of Baltimore, again, is another one of our Second Chance Pell Institutions. They started with us in 2016 with a bachelor's degree in human services. And again, they are, continue to work to accept individuals into their program. They try to do about 25 students per year into the program, and we're looking to graduate some of those individuals very soon as well. On the far eastern shore, we partnered with Warwick Community College since 2017, and they are offering certificates in business management and hotel management. And we continue to get a lot of interest from individuals that are incarcerated at ECI to be part of this program. What's unique about this program is they were one of the first higher educational institutions that offered a hybrid opportunity for some of their classes, and we were able to bring that behind the walls as well. Georgetown University started in January of 2022 with a BA in liberal arts. They are at the Patuxent Institute. What is unique about Georgetown is that their classes are comprised of both men and women. We've had an opportunity for the Georgetown president to actually come down and speak with them, and the men and women involved in this program are very elated about the opportunity to get a degree from Georgetown, who wouldn't be? And they get to talk to their family and friends about this, so it's not only rewarding for them, but encouraging for their children and others that are at home to put them on the right track. Fall of 2022, we accepted our first HBCU. Thank you, Bowie State University. Bowie has come on board, and Bowie has taken charge with a degree in sociology at JCI. They have been very instrumental, not only in their degree, but as becoming mentors and tutors for support, just not only of the program but of that population at JCI. They ran an additional program this summer just to provide additional mentoring and tutoring to individuals that may be involved in the fall semester program for Bowie. We also had Senate Bill 800, which basically developed a 12-month pilot program so that individuals who were coming back out could receive some type of certificate from a college or university, specifically a HBCU. And we had several that signed up through MEHEC, and there was a vetting and a review process that MEHEC did. And from that, Bowie was the one whose restorative justice program was granted at MCIW, and they're receiving funding now so that they can do their restorative justice program there. This slide just gives you a view of our community placements, our home detention. One of the things that you'll see, the reason that our home detention continues to rise now, they were rising right before COVID. During COVID, we made a diligent effort to look at everyone and to see if there was anyone that did not pose a public safety risk that we could allow to go back home, and we worked diligently with the courts, the state's attorneys, and others to make those decisions. We are now rising again in our placements because we did expand our home detention efforts statewide. Previous administration had only certain what they called catchment areas in which they did home detention, but we are looking at home detention from the eastern shore to Cumberland and east and west of the state so that everyone now has an opportunity for home detention if eligible. And the last slide just gives you an idea of some of the community-based partners that we are already working with, that come behind our walls and work with us on a daily basis just to make sure that we are helping these individuals transfer back into our communities. Goodwill, Easter Seals. I do want to just say that Prince George's County has really made some dynamic ways in creating their reentry Prince George's. They also, through their state's attorney's office, Ms. Aisha Brave Boy, started what's called an Emerging Adults Program. That's every Tuesday night that we have, and these are individuals that are coming back to Prince George's County. We know they're coming back to the county, and they are meeting with them. They are helping us to make sure they have the essentials they need to come back, food, housing, connecting them to employment, mental health services, medical services, whatever that need is. When they walk out the door, they know that there is an opportunity in Prince George's County for them. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Secretary. You guys are doing amazing work. I appreciate you. We're gonna, before we go to questions for you, I'm gonna turn it over to Monty, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement. They've got a presentation as well, and I'll offer comment, if any, from the state's attorney's office if they'd like to provide comment. Director Mavronas, Flores.
Thank you. And is there a clicker?
One second.
Thank you. All right. While, I got it. Thank you. While we're getting that set up, just want to introduce a couple members of my team. First, I'm Stephanie Mavronas Interim Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. I'm joined here today by our newly joined Community Engagement and Opportunity Associate Director, Mylena Bead Johnson, and Policy and Research Associate Director, John Hoffman. Thank you both for being here. We'll start out today just by providing some context. Okay. So, as we can tell from the presentation also that the secretary just shared, we know that Baltimoreans are disproportionately impacted by mass incarceration. We have a large number of residents returning home to Baltimore City from prison each year, and we know we have to do a better job of providing reentry services. It's been the mayor's belief that reentry has to start well before someone is released, and we appreciate the partnership at the state with partners like Moed in really making that a reality and ensuring that there's a local home for reentry services to join with the work at the state, to join with our workforce organizations and community-based partners, and that work has been established in Monty. All right. So, our work focuses on supporting returning citizens and preventing recidivism. That means we don't just work with individuals, but as you heard in the secretary's presentation, we also have to work with families. We have to think about healing and rebuilding in some cases and providing a whole host of wraparound services to previously incarcerated community members. This slide just shows some of the components of successful reentry. I think we could probably all generate a few more to add to this list, but just to show the range of wraparound services, everything from barrier removal as far as documentation is concerned, access to employment and family sustaining wages, mental health support, education, and a whole host of community supports. And we know coordination is critically important. As the agency tasked with implementing the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan, part of our role is to serve as that local convener and think about how our different agencies and our respective process maps, our ways of working with people who are incarcerated and people upon return, that those systems connect, and that's some of the work I'll be talking about today that we'll be prioritizing as we move forward. All right. So, in the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan, we outline the importance of ensuring that people who are, who have been incarcerated have all the resources they need to successfully return, making sure they're well-equipped to support their families and live meaningful and productive lives. I mentioned that our reentry work must start long before residents return home, and we have a lot of partnership in that area. But we want to make sure that through a few different areas in our portfolio of work, whether it's the Group Violence Reduction Strategy, the work of Safe Streets, thinking about Gunshot Survivor Victim Services, Intimate Partner Violence Prevention, the work of the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, and then, of course, our dedicated reentry focus, all of these elements in some way, shape, or form touch the lives of people who have returned from prison. And so, just want to point out that, you know, when we think about reentry and having that dedicated space, there's lots of intersections we have to be mindful of. So, I think as many of you are aware, the mayor announced the Returning Citizens Behind the Wall Initiative. This is a partnership with the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services, with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, and with Baltimore City Rec and Parks, which has been an amazing partner in this effort. This is something that we're funding with American Rescue Plan Act dollars, really with the goal of providing training and paid employment at $15 an hour for people preparing to return to their communities. So, we're talking about the population of people here that slated to return to Baltimore City, who is eligible for work release, and who also wants to opt into this program to have the opportunity to earn a higher wage and also get connected to some of those city supports earlier on. So, we have 32 active participants, which we define as sort of people who were enrolled in and continue to be a part of that program. Of course, everyone has different release dates. Everyone's eligible at different times, but we soft-launched this initiative in the spring. Really, the goal of that soft-launch was to make sure we could understand what was working well in our partnership interagency and what needed to be improved before we went full steam ahead. We've had some really fruitful conversations with our partner agencies here. I know DPSES and Moed respectively have lots of ideas about what we can do to make sure our services are not duplicated and work even stronger together. And so, we're looking forward between now and the end of this calendar year in really stepping through that work interagency so that we can really focus on recruitment into the program and increasing those active participant numbers. The last slide that I'll present here before I turn it over to my colleague at Moed is really around the work of Safe Return Plans. This is something that we speak about in the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan, and this is really collaborative work. So, you saw in the secretary's presentation about some of the ways the staff on the state's side are working to do case management, are working to provide resources. We know our colleagues at Mayor's Office of Employment Development do that on the workforce side, too. And so, as we're thinking about Safe Return Plans and making sure that connection exists when someone is released, we want to make sure that all of our interagency process maps align and that we're able to provide the best support to individuals and their families upon release. One of the most critical things that I'll emphasize here is we know the first 10 months post-release for someone is often the most critical. It could be when they're most at risk for being revictimized or retaliating. And so, making sure that we have that strong connection to the individuals, their needs, how we make sure they're successful is really important. And so, we are aiming to have a shared plan by the end of this calendar year, as I mentioned, to activate this work, and Monty is in the process of hiring a reentry coordinator who will be supporting this work full-time. All right. I'm gonna turn it over here to my colleague Craig Lewis from Moed to share. Are you gonna sit there?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Conway and honorable council members. I'm honored to be here today to address this esteemed city council hearing. My name is Craig Lewis. I'm the Assistant Director, Chief of Adult Services with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, and it is both a privilege and a responsibility to be here to advocate on behalf of our returning citizens and talk about the wraparound services needed to mitigate recidivism. At Moed, we operate the Reentry Center at the Northwest Career Center, which is the largest provider of reentry services in the city. Many of our partners who are co-located in the One Stop include the Maryland Department of Labor, the Reentry Navigator, Child Support Administration, Department of Social Services, Baltimore City Community College, Doors. And our target goal is set based on a contract that we have with Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services to serve 1,800 justice-involved individuals every year, of which 500 must be on active supervision. These numbers remain indicative of the need for robust reentry services in Baltimore City. And by the way, we place 400 justice-involved individuals in jobs every year at an average wage more than $15 an hour. You can turn to the next slide. And with that being said, we realize that wraparound services are critical to successful reintegration, and some of the wraparound services that we provide at the Reentry Center include support for securing documents like IDs and birth certificates. We provide mental and legal support services, transportation support. In partnership with Lyft, we provide 40 free rides to and from work, and this is funded through our OPERA initiative. We also provide earned benefit screening through a partner organization that's co-located in the One Stop, and this service is designed to determine if someone is eligible for a wide array of public benefits and help them apply for those benefits if they're eligible. And some of the benefits include transitional housing, meal programs, referral to other support services. And as I mentioned, Child Support Administration is co-located in the One Stop, and they help resolve or mitigate child support issues. We also have the Cash Campaign that provides free TIC services, and then we also have Financial Empowerment Services, which are very important as they assist residents in four key areas: debt, credit, savings, and access to safe and affordable banking products. So, I'm just running through some of this. You can go to the next slide. As I mentioned, employment assistance is very important. We have dedicated employer services team that work out of the Reentry Center, bringing local employers to the One Stop. We also provide job search assistance. We provide career counseling to help individuals understand what the labor market trends are and how best they can connect. And also, it was mentioned about the job fairs and the many recruitments. We have a minimum two recruitments per month in the One Stop, and we also partner with Safe Streets to have job fairs out in the community. In terms of skill development, we provide occupational skills training up to $4,500 for an individual to go to a community college or proprietary school so that they can acquire those in-demand skills in construction trade, transportation, manufacturing, logistics, and warehousing. We also are part of the Maryland Works for Wind Initiative, and that is a consortium to connect individuals to this emerging industry in the offshore wind. Recently, we were awarded a QUEST grant, and QUEST is an acronym for Quality Jobs, Equity, Strategy, and Training, and it's a dislocated worker grant from the Maryland Department of Labor to serve an additional 90 returning citizens. And it's a three-year grant, and it includes many of the supportive services such as assistance with housing, legal services, assistance with childcare, transportation, and also needs-related payments, and education supports. Baltimore City Community College is a partner in the One Stop. They provide the GED and ABE instructions. And I think I'll stop there. Maryland Department of Labor is also a partner in the One Stop, not just the Reentry Navigator, but their staff provide the federal bonding, and federal bonding is an incentive program designed to encourage businesses to hire qualified job seekers who have certain risk factors in their backgrounds. And these wraparound services create a comprehensive support system that empower individuals to achieve self-sufficiency and successful reintegration in society, and that's some of the work that we do. Of course, there's more work to be done, and we're being very intentional about partnering with our partners, Monty, DPS, and other partners that serve reentry, our reentry residents. And so, with that, I'll yield back to my colleague.
Thank you. I think I just have two or three more slides, and I'll go through those quickly. I know we have the sponsor in the room, so I know the body is familiar with this piece of legislation. But Councilman Torrance introduced legislation to establish the Office of Returning Citizens. This really would codify a lot of the work that we're looking to build the foundation of at Monty and ensure that it has a home at City Hall longer than any one administration or term. And so, this proposed office would institutionalize a lot of the work, as I said, making sure that the city maintains its capacity to serve individuals returning from incarceration, really with a focus on coordinating services, developing support networks, and advocating for those reentering. This would be housed within the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, and the work of this office would also include overseeing the Reentry Action Council, which I'll talk about next. The Reentry Action Council really is focused on coordinating government agencies and community-based organizations, people with lived experience, people in the business community. We heard the secretary talk about the importance of identifying more employers who are willing to do work with this population and support them upon their return. That's something that we see the rec really being able to take up effectively. And so, with this body, we've received a lot of public interest from people both with lived experience and people in the community who share passion around this issue. We're really excited to be able to kind of initiate this work in alignment with the legislation. We're really excited to be able to kind of initiate this work in alignment with the legislation and want to be able to name the initial body of the RAC by early 2024. Like I said, we have interest. I think we have some identified stakeholders. We would welcome the input of the council about those in your districts who would really need to be a part of this body, but looking at it almost in an advisory capacity for the work that we do on a policy and operational level. And Baltimore Reconnects, this is an initiative that the mayor, city administrator, announced a number of months ago that lives within MONC. We know city government can't do this work alone. We need strong partnerships with community-based organizations. Baltimore Reconnects is funded by a Department of Justice grant. We work in partnership with the University of Maryland Social Work School and a number of partners, including Pivot and Reproductive Justice Inside, with a focus on parenting skills for parents who are incarcerated. And so, with this initiative, we're looking forward to continuing this work with Maryland and making sure that we can support this population. And then, finally, I just have a slide here with a few of the partners that we've granted with that do work in the community around reentry. These run the gamut from different kinds of support programs to workforce programs, but just to show some of the ways we're looking to bring more of those partners into this ecosystem. And I think with that, I will leave it there.
Thank you, Director of Members. Appreciate the work you guys are doing. Really, really helpful to understand and get it all in one conversation. I want to extend an opportunity for the State's Attorney's Office to sign. I don't know if there's anything you want to add to the conversation. I don't think you guys have a presentation today, but...
No, we don't.
Okay.
Thanks, Chair.
Oh, the microphone. Yep.
Yeah, thank you again. Very brief. The State's Attorney did want to make sure that we were present today. He's very supportive of the efforts. Obviously, we're primarily a prosecutorial agency. We don't have a lot of resources to do anything but that. But if y'all got some money, we would gladly be able to take that and do what we can. The State's Attorney just recently met with Secretary Scruggs a few weeks ago, came away very impressed with the program and the leadership she has over there right now. There's a program that's being implemented in Prince George's County that we plan to emulate in the coming weeks. We just got to, you know, make sure that we... He wants to be very intentional when he puts these programs in place. When we came into office 10 months ago, there was one or two programs that were in place that weren't being managed correctly. So, we wanted to kind of pull back. Obviously, the citation document took up a lot of time and space in our office of putting that together. And even in that, it was not just giving citations, but also offering those wraparound services. But he definitely wants to move forward. He's very supportive of Councilman Torrance's legislation that's been put in. He was supportive during the legislative session of Delegate Kailin Young and Delegate Carl Jackson's bills for reentry. And look, this isn't just words for State's Attorney. He was very supportive of those returning when he was in his private life. Corey, who was his law clerk, many people know who Corey is, offered him a job as a law clerk. He's doing great things over at Garcia Law. And even at the State's Attorney's Office, many of our support staff, well, not many, but a few of them, have returned as citizens, as well as high-level, including myself. So, you know, he kind of tried to put money where his mouth is, right, and do what he can do. But we're willing to work with the council, the councilmen in your legislation, certainly MONC and the Mayor's Office, especially if y'all got some money, to be able to implement programs, especially what they're doing over there with Secretary Scruggs. They're doing some great work.
Yeah. I, you know, you keep mentioning money, and, you know, I think it's a worthwhile conversation. I think as you guys better game out what the pilot program might look like and how Prince George's is seeing returns from it and so on and so forth, I think it makes a really strong case for us to strongly consider investing in that here. So, yeah, I mean, I certainly am. I can't speak for my colleagues, but I'm open to that conversation and advocating for additional funding for the office. With that, I'm going to turn to questions. I've got a couple of my own. I want to, you know, thank you all for coming so prepared today. This question is actually for, I'm going to start with a question for Secretary Scruggs. I'm curious, Secretary, in your experience, what are some of the resources that incarcerated folks or formerly incarcerated folks need most upon reentry? And I'm sure you touched on some of the things and how we're providing it here, but I'm curious if there is any high correlation with certain needs that has an implication for recidivism.
Thank you for that question. So, the top three that we're seeing are transportation, housing, and the big one is an opportunity. Transportation first because many of our returning citizens come back usually through, while they're still under supervision with us. And while they're under supervision, we're able to find them employment, but then getting them to that employment is sometimes very challenging. I will tell you that we have even gone as far as to partner with various bike programs and issue bikes to individuals just so they can get to their jobs, so that they can stay gainfully employed and not violate their conditions of parole or probation. So, transportation to those employment opportunities are one of the big challenges that we see. I am working with the Secretary for the Maryland Department of Transportation right now to see if there is a way that we can work on giving them maybe a 60-day, 90-day bus pass upon release, just so that they can get started until they get that first check, that they can actually buy a bus pass or be able to use a Lyft or be able to use some type of other taxi service. So, transportation is big. Housing becomes a challenge just because, again, like I briefly spoke, the nature of the crime. We are starting to see some of our longer-term incarcerated men and women come up on mandatory release. And because of the nature of some of their crimes, they cannot stay in some of the public housing areas where their families are currently living. So, their families can't take them in. So, then, we have to find housing for them. We work with various community entities to do that, but housing would be another... But I would say those are the top two that we're seeing right now.
I really appreciate that explanation because I'll tell you, and you and I, we had a conversation months ago now, which led to this hearing. But in my personal experience, when I ran a workforce development program trying to help returning citizens, that was exactly my experience. We were training folks. They were coming out with great skills and a willingness to work, but the jobs were just outside of the reach of the public transportation system. So, I, you know, that's an issue for us to think about, I think for the region to think about, honestly. But I really appreciate that insight. The...I'm curious, Secretary, do we have any data to support that? Do we have any surveys, for instance, or any follow-up information based on recidivism? In which case, we knew that in a plan, we didn't have certain components, and we see a high correlation in those plans. Do we have anything like that?
I'm happy to have my data specialist go back and pull that data for you. It was in one of the recidivism reports that we shared. It was a JCR that we had to do for the legislature. She won't be back, unfortunately, until next Monday because she's on vacation in Mexico. But if you give me a week, I'll pull that data together for you and get it to you.
I'm jealous.
You know, well-deserved vacation.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And to my second question, so you touched on this, Secretary, about, you touched on transportation, housing, and then opportunity. It seems like we have some really great programming happening within our prison system to prepare folks for jobs. I'm really curious about our success or the opportunities, and maybe Moed can talk a little bit about this, how well we make those connections upon, you know, folks leaving our prison system. Do we find, like, how does that system work? I don't know who coordinates that. I don't know if that's DPSES or if that's you folks. I guess, Secretary, or either of you can answer that question.
So, if it's work release, we're definitely coordinating it because they're still basically under our custody, but they're work release. If it is a mandatory release, we are trying to still work with them and follow them for at least three months to make sure that we can connect them. The challenge is that, again, the opportunities are not there. Let me say, the opportunities are there, but the employers are not willing to take the challenge on them, to actually give them that opportunity. We have some employees that are champions. A lot of the, we know a lot of the fast-food restaurants will take them, but we have men and women that are coming out with national certificates in auto mechanics. We have people like Vehicles for Change, who is a champion, who will take those individuals and continue to help them to grow in their efforts and employ them. So, they're an example. We have people like Mr. Weber at Uptown Printers, who will take those individuals that come out from us with graphic design certificates. And he employs them. He works them. I have to recognize our own MCE, Maryland Correctional Enterprise, because we have an array of different opportunities that we train while they're behind the wall. And we are now employing back at least 20% of those individuals that are returning and citizens back into the state agency so that they can work and have opportunities. So, it's the business owner that we really need to be able to touch, and that they need to understand that we're not going to send them someone that we feel as though is problematic. We are going to screen that individual, knowing that that individual wouldn't have been released if we knew that they were problematic. We know we all cannot, we can't predict human behavior. But certainly, many of these men and women want to change, want to do better, and we just don't see the opportunity in the community sometimes for that to happen.
Thank you for the question. There's two entry points to, or a few entry points to the Reentry Center. One is through our Reentry Navigator, who is with the Maryland Department of Labor, who visits the correction facility to talk about resources and services. The other is DPSES through referrals, individuals who are under active supervision. In our agreement, we serve minimum 500 individuals per year who are on active supervision, and we place a good portion of that, over half, I shouldn't say over half, 200 as a part of our agreement. I think the other thing that's really important, that we take the approach of advocacy and we advocate on behalf of our customers, we call them customers, our reentry folks, because I think employers, especially in a time where the labor market is such that it is, when there's low employment, this is a viable population that can take on some of these jobs, some of this work. And it's through the advocacy that we place a lot of individuals in good-paying jobs. And so, it's the advocacy, it's the making sure that they have the skills, the barriers that are removed. And I'm happy to report that our average wage is more than $15 an hour, and so, we're placing folks in good-paying jobs. Obviously, gentleman mentioned resources. You know, if we had more resources, we could do more. A number of years back, we sent staff into correction facilities, all of them, that released residents back into Baltimore City. But that agreement sunset, and Maryland Department of Labor started taking on that work. And so, I hope I answered your question.
No, that's super helpful.
And then, the other, if I could just add, the other thing that we do is just promote our resources and services and work with the larger ecosystem to have our reentry partners make those referrals to us so that we can provide the services that are needed to this population.
No, I appreciate that. That's helpful to know. And, you know, I think, being the numbers guy, I'm always looking at the numbers here. There was a slide that the secretary put up that showed the state and Baltimore City's sort of cut of the pie from formerly incarcerated individuals returning back home. And Baltimore had just shy of 1,200 folks, about 37% of that entire pie. And in my mind, and I talked about this in my opening statement, this is a system, and, you know, when someone is incarcerated, that is our opportunity to help them and to get them back on track. And it sounds like we have a lot of the training programs, and we're trying to get more folks to go through the training programs while they're still incarcerated. The question for me is for those 1,200 folks that then eventually leave, we want to make it as easy as possible for them to do the right thing. So, if they've got training in carpentry, like, they should immediately come out to a carpentry job. If they got training in landscaping, they should immediately come out to a landscaping job. And if that means that we have to create relationships and partnerships in the private sector, I know we have a lot of vacancies in city government for which we are looking for good people who can help us, you know, meet that need. We should make it as easy as possible for folks to get those jobs. So, I know we're working on those fronts, but, you know, the end-all, be-all for me is that number, 1,170 people. And we should be finding 1,170 jobs the moment that folks leave, 1,170 apartments or places for incarcerated individuals to be housed. And that should be the number that we're budgeting off of, in my mind, something in that world. So, just a thought, and, you know, feel free to...
Yes, thank you for that. One of the things that we, my colleagues and we've talked about is having access to the safe return plans early on before individuals are released back into the city so that we can begin to put those support services in place prior to release and have some of those opportunities ready and available once they return back to the community. Right now, I think there's, there's an opportunity for better alignment around that because, you know, sometimes we, someone hit the streets, and in some cases, they're not as familiar about the resources or the services, and so, they don't get connected. And so, I think that's an opportunity that we should explore.
I agree. Thank you. I'm going to hand off to Councilman Torrance if you've got any questions. I know this is an issue that is very, very near and dear to you, and you've already done some work here, so I'm going to offer an opportunity for you to ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you say, this is near and dear to me. This is actually personal to me. I will say that Moed is doing yeoman's work. I was just having conversations with your executive director earlier this year about the 40 rides that we provide with OPERA dollars. The next step I was thinking about in advocating with my fellow colleagues, just to give you a hint, hint, that for the women that are returning back to Baltimore, how do we incentivize vouchers and assistance for childcare, right, a part of that family reunification? Because when they come home, they're mom again, right? And that was one of the barriers that we're starting to notice in terms of the 40 rides is great, but then you got to get someone to childcare, then you also have to get someone access to childcare. And if you did commit a serious crime, you're still waiting in line for TANF benefits. You're still waiting in line to get the voucher. So, I'm just going to say kudos to you guys. And then, my biggest question right now, and this is something that I have for the administration, is I have a bill that I've been holding off on, which incentivizes city vendors to hire returning citizens from Baltimore, because if you do business with the city of Baltimore, you should be hiring Baltimore citizens. But also, if you're getting significant funds from the city, at least a portion of the population should reflect the portion of the population of our citizens who were mass incarcerated in the early 2000s. That's the way we can be restorative in making sure people enter the workforce without asking given a tax credit. Actually, we're paying you to do a job already. We should incentivize you to fill those roles. So, I'm just putting it out there that that is something I'm working on with the administration that's well about. But I want to talk about, have we done an evaluation for, and this has, this is going to go through the minority businesses, for returning, prioritizing and scoring for returning citizens who are business owners, right? Because there are a number of people who have left incarceration because they could not get the certification or they could not get the resources that allowed them to have a job. They started their own business. I know a gentleman from CFUF that was a carpenter, could not get hired by a construction company, went out, became a general contractor, and now has his own company, right? How do we incentivize that person being an exception, being not only, not being an exception, but the rule? And how do we incentivize... And how do we incentivize making sure that we stand up more of him? So that's just a question I pose out there that you don't have to answer today. But I think it's a thoughtful question we should think about, because we are a $3 billion organization. We can direct funds and use them meaningfully to make sure that businesses that do business with us and those who don't do businesses with us have an opportunity to do the right thing. So I'm going to yield back to the chair, because I just want to put out some thoughtful questions, because I appreciate your work. I can sit here and ask you questions all day, but I just want to give you kudos today.
Thank you, Councilman. If you guys have anything to add, feel free.
I would love to see the legislation and just appreciate your commitment to the issue and excited to continue to partner there.
Thank you.
And if I can add, in relation to the females that are returning back, we have actually started what's called a Mommy and Me program behind the walls. And what it does is it reconnects those females that are incarcerated with their children so that, again, that there is a smooth transition as they come back into the community. We allow the guardian of that child, whether it is another family member or whether the child is in foster care, depending on the circumstances, to bring that child to the prison environment. We have a room that's set up specifically for mommy and me. It looks like a playground, it looks like a school, it's conducive to children because we want them to feel safe and comfortable there. We have social workers that work with them so that they understand what's happening with mommy, they understand whether mommy's coming home, and the social worker is also engaged with that individual as part of that transition when they're coming back. So we have started some of that behind the walls to help those mothers. As we know, when they come back out into the community, they're going to pick up where they left off taking care of their children. I did also want to make sure you all knew that through Maryland Department of Labor, they have a bonding program for employers that are willing to accept returning citizens. And that bonding program basically protects that business from any of the concerns and challenges that they have of that returning citizen may be causing a hardship or being problematic. So as you start to champion some of these individuals to come on board and accept these returning citizens, please direct them to Maryland Department of Labor's website and let them look at that bonding program, because that may help encourage them.
It's a test. It's a test of the system. We're all good, yes.
National alert.
Yes.
That's all I had.
Okay, sorry about that, Secretary. Please continue.
You're good. I just said, no, I think the last thing I said before the test came over was that as you start to basically champion these employers to take on the opportunities to bring the returning citizens into their businesses and communities, please direct them to Maryland Department of Labor's website and let them look at the bonding opportunities that they can have if they employ returning citizens.
Madam Secretary, I just have one question. It's something that's been lingering, the current status of the pre-release center for women in the state of Maryland. It is something that we desperately need. I just want to know, because I know the Hogan administration lacked the love to actually move forward. I just want to make sure where we are in terms of finalizing that new center.
Thank you for that question. We are moving forward. We just budgeted $5 million for design and programming space. We actually have identified a location, 1717 Madison Street. It's going to be very close to the proximity and campus of the old BCDC that we tore down. We are looking at creating it in two levels. The first level will be programming and opportunities for women. And the second level will be a 62-bed residential pre-release center where those women live. So we have the first group of funding. As we go back before the legislature this coming session, we will be asking for funding because it is an unfunded mandate at this time. So we are going to need funds in order to move forward. But this administration has every intention to move forward with that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To, I guess, all of the presenters, I didn't see a lot of detail in your presentations about providing housing. As, we did talk about it? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay. In terms of making sure that there's an opportunity for, whether it's helping them with apartments or whether it's subsidizing the rent initially, we had put together a program with DHCD that is called Program Hope, I believe, and working with MED on that one. And I think we're applying it also to returning citizens, which I'm excited about and look forward to hearing the details. Because one of the biggest things, barriers to any of this, is to make sure that we've got housing. So I apologize, I was out speaking with the governor earlier, so I apologize that I missed a question earlier. But again, just trying to emphasize, you know, how that is. I mean, finding 1,170 places to live, I know is challenging, but we've got to do it and subsidize that rent. And then, you know, the Hope program, what it does is it subsidizes for 12 months and then tiers down. And it uses Affordable Housing Trust Fund money, so using the trust fund, you know, dollars that we, the council, had come up with before. So I think, again, just emphasizing that that's really critical. And so hopefully that you can integrate, so just talk a little bit more about it if you don't mind. And then I have one more question after that.
Yes, thank you for the question. It's a great program and we have referred tons of residents to the opportunity. It's a critical resource, because housing is an issue. And there are some, there are some, some...
Operational challenges, you could say it.
Challenges to navigate, especially in terms of the processing time. And so just working through some of those challenges with our partners so that applicants don't get discouraged and walk away from the process. And so any support and assistance that you might be able to lend with helping to mitigate some of those challenges, it would really be beneficial.
I will. Commissioner's going to get an email from me right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My second question is, first, I just want to say that I'm an alumni of Goucher College. My colleague from the first also is as well. We're very proud of the prison education program and I'm really grateful that it's been doing so well. And I attended a graduation one time where one of the graduates had come out of prison and finished their education on the campus. And it was very emotional, I'm getting emotional. It was very emotional and really just very powerful. So I'm glad that, you know, Madam Secretary and the department has been willing to say, when a partner comes and says, hey, let's do this, you're like, yes, let's do it, and making it work. So I'm really grateful for that. And so you talked a little bit about, my colleague asked a little bit about the reentry for women. And I'm sorry if I missed this, I'm a little distracted from a lot of things going on from yesterday. But there had been a lot of advocacy around women's pre-release. And what does that look like now? Or do we have a pre-release center? I think you talked about, you know, starting to invest in something similar, but more of a... So talk a little bit about whether we're actually moving forward on that pre-release for women? Because there wasn't one prior to Senator Washington and others advocating for such.
So thank you again for that question. We are moving forward with the pre-release center for women. As I stated before, $5 million has already been dedicated towards design and program so that we can start to actually look at what does that center look like. We brought on a consultant firm to help us with that. We've identified 1717 Madison Street as the location right in Baltimore City. It is adjacent to the old BCDC complex where we leveled the old jail there. The bottom portion of the, it's going to be a two-story building. The bottom ground floor will be programming opportunities for women and all type of reentry efforts. And the top floor will be a 64-bed housing, residential housing for them. So we are in the stages of getting that done. It is an unfunded mandate, which means next legislative session, I've got to go back and I've got to ask for money to now start building. So we're hoping that, and I know that it'll get supported, but this administration intends on moving forward with that and every effort. So what are we doing now, absent the brick and mortar? When I served as Assistant Secretary, and I knew this had come to the table, I started a project called Project Fresh at MCIW. And what we did was, we vacated a housing unit at MCIW and we redid it to make it look like a living quarters if you were outside. You don't get locked in, the doors stay open. We first looked at those women that were eligible for pre-release and then we vetted some or another, about 25 women, just to give them the opportunity. These women are now living in Project Fresh. They go and come every day throughout the campus, just as if they were out in the community. In the evening, we bring in all types of resources and services for them, because many of them either work or go to school during the day. They do their med passes on their own, they go to their chow on their own. So they are living as if they're living in the community, but it is still unfortunately on the campus. I invite you anytime you want to come see Project Fresh, we welcome you to come down. I know the women would be delighted to see you and I'll be happy to meet you there so that you can see it.
Thank you for the opportunity, I'll certainly take you up on that. Marion House is in my district, so it sounds very similar to that model, which is very successful. So thank you very much for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to all the partners that are in the room, to my colleague for his work on this legislation. One, a couple of groups that I didn't see, I just wanted to quickly ask about, Job Opportunity Task Force, Center for Urban Families, and Turnaround Tuesdays. Those are, in my mind, some of our better workforce development partners when it comes to supporting folks coming back from incarceration. Just wanted to check, just because I didn't see them on any of the presentation, are we still in direct partnership with all three of those groups?
So we partner very closely with JOTF in a lot of our work. We've had conversations with Turnaround Tuesday. There's an opportunity to engage a bit more deeper. And I apologize, the third organization...
Center for Urban Families with Joe Jones.
Yes, and so we partner with them. They're one of our Opera training providers under Train Up. And so, yes, we do partner with them.
Great. Would love to see something cemented with Turnaround Tuesday. They do really good work and I think have figured out navigating, to the chairman's point, navigating relationships with some of the larger employers in town, specifically Hopkins, University of Maryland Medical System, and really trying to bring folks into a pipeline where it's not just a job out of jail, but actually an opportunity to begin to make it toward a career and also develop advocacy, organizing, self-efficacy skills that I've seen just good stuff with that program. So I would push us to intentionally build with them. Also was curious about, I don't know if I missed it, but the unions, specifically the building trades, carpenters, the electrician. I mean, these are, you know, skilled jobs, right? We're not talking about unskilled labor. But to me, when folks are coming out of incarceration, it shouldn't just be about immediately get them a job. That's important, folks have to pay bills. But if we're keeping people at a $12, $13, $14 an hour pay scale, then they're going to continue to have major issues with alimony, with, someone mentioned earlier, transportation, getting to and from work. I mean, just the many hurdles that the living, that the working poor in our city experience. And so I am curious, have we done any relationship building, specifically with the building trades, but also SEIU, Unite Here, the hotels? Because I think there could be just some real great mutual interest there if we are both providing a workforce, which again, we've said in this room a million times, we need workers, right? And we're also building people's skills and getting them to a place where they're making a family sustaining wage and able to take care of themselves and their families.
Thank you for the question. We are working very closely with the unions. In fact, I mentioned earlier, we're part of a consortium around the Maryland Works for Win, and those are union jobs. And so it's creating this pipeline of, from apprenticeship, pre-apprenticeship to apprenticeship to union jobs. We're currently in discussion with many of our union partners around creating this pipeline because Baltimore is one of, Baltimore was selected as one of five workforce hubs around the country because of the Amtrak jobs, those are union jobs. And so where we, we've been having regular conversations almost weekly around creating this strategy, prioritizing disadvantaged communities in Baltimore City and creating more access for residents to move into some of these union jobs. And so we're actively having some of those conversations right now.
Well, that's great to hear, because I know historically, unions have at times had challenges in terms of their diversity and hiring from within cities. And I know that for many of our current partners in organized labor, they're really looking to just dramatically change that culture and really try to hire from within our city and get folks into careers that are self-sustaining and family sustaining. So I'm glad to hear that we are investing in that partnership. And just last point, you know, and you mentioned the Biden administration and sort of the interest in Baltimore with Amtrak and just, I think, seeing us as a perfect test case for really doubling down on infrastructure. To me, it is like the perfect moment for our city to really figure out some of these longstanding challenges where we haven't been able to get folks into really great jobs. And we know, you know, I think everyone in this room is clear that if you do not find stable, solid employment that is leading to uplift and making your life and your family's life better, you will reoffend. So I'm glad to hear that those partnerships are happening and I would just, whatever we can do to support, here for it.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, I would just say, some of the issues that you're raising, Councilman, especially looking at the system as a whole, looking at ways that we can better align across the partners, like the relationship building is happening, how do we now turn it into a policy conversation? How do we turn it into a, almost like a campaign to get some of our employers, some of our labor partners on board? I think that's exactly the kind of work we see the Reentry Action Council doing.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and all that have joined us this afternoon. So I had a question, and I'm not really sure who to direct it to, so I'll just throw it out there. So as the, you know, Chair of the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, one of the biggest concerns that we have is labor trafficking and particularly of vulnerable adults. And we know that oftentimes, folks who are returning citizens are taken advantage of by contractors, or can be taken advantage of by contractors who know that if they violate their parole, they'll be sent back. What work is being done to both educate folks about what their rights are and if they are taken advantage of, where to go for that information? Like, is that being communicated to folks who are... Like, is that being communicated to folks who are working on construction sites and other settings that make them particularly vulnerable? I'm not sure if that's for you or Secretary Suggs, Scruggs, I'm sorry.
I'll share with you what our case managers do and our reentry specialists. So as part of the review of their home plan, and we do a release plan with them and closing out with them and the continuity of care, as we call it. We talk to them about vulnerabilities and vulnerabilities returning back into the community. We also have that, use that opportunity to see if they already feel any challenges to those vulnerabilities that could be placed upon them. And if they do, then we then connect them to the social worker or either the psychologist that can also help to walk and guide them through. So if they're still under our custody on parole or probation, that information is also sent over to their agent so that it is something that we can stay focused on and determine whether or not there is a need to make sure that we are connecting with them and potentially providing them opportunities. Because that's going to develop, that's going to determine their risk assessment. The risk assessment that's going to be done to determine, you know, what we allow as far as while they're still on supervision. So there is a level of that being done. Again, it's more of based on your risk assessment, based on our conversations with you. This is, this seems to be your vulnerability. And then how do we then deal with that? And then telling them who to actually report to if they get into some of those challenges so that we can help them work out of it. If they're mandatory released, we are, we're not, we are not doing that because they're not going to have any continuous connection to us at that point.
And I'll just say that is an opportunity for us. Going back a few years ago, we had the Office of Civil Rights come to the One Stop and do a presentation to staff as well as to our job seekers. And it's been a while. That's an opportunity for us to revisit that.
Got it. And are there, just as a quick follow-up, I guess, the vetting process for these locations, you know, to ensure that there's no, like, pattern in practice of exploitation at these, the sites where folks are being placed? I guess, is there, how does that work as far as something does occur where someone is taken advantage of? Are folks disenrolled from the program? Like, how does that work?
For DVSCS, every program that we place an individual in, we have, we vet every program before we even utilize them. So if we have not vetted your program, you are not going to be placed in that program. We vet not only our programs, but we vet our employer opportunities as well. And we are constantly, under Division of Parole and Probation, they are constantly vetting those individuals. And when there's an alert for that program, then we go back and we reassess it. And if there's a determination that we need to remove that program from with us, then that's what we do.
Got it.
Same with MoED. We invent training providers as well as employers before we place our job seekers with either the vendor or the employer.
Got it. Okay. And I just want to lift up to my colleagues. I did have a chance to visit the Goucher College program a few years back. Was really impressed with the work that was being done there. Got to connect with, through the incarcerated individuals to, you know, just get a better feel for what, you know, their experience, what it was. Got to sit in classrooms. It was really impressive. So I just want to lift it up that that was a great partnership that I think should be the standard across the system. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. I've got one other question specifically regarding mental health. Mental health, addiction, and anything in that realm. Do we first, do we assess folks at all in the course of their incarceration for their mental needs? And if you could tell me, Secretary, as much as you can, about how we help folks once they leave our system to navigate, you know, mental health issues once out in the public?
Ken, thank you for that question. A mental health assessment is done at initial intake. So, for example, in Baltimore City, upon coming into the Baltimore Central Booking and Intake Center, there is a medical and mental health assessment done. That risk assessment, at that point, will determine the need of care and whether or not, while they are waiting pre-trial with us, whether or not there is a need for them to see a mental health specialist. If they're committed to our facility by the court commissioner and we know that they're going to be with us for some time, within seven days, there is a full physical and mental health assessment done so that they can be better prepared while they are incarcerated. It's during that time that any ordering of any necessary medications, if they were on meds in the community or if the psychologist or psychiatrist deems the need for medication can be done. We also, because of the need of mental health, we have developed what's called an inmate mental health unit right there at Baltimore Central Booking. The psychologists and psychiatrists can indeed direct them to the mental health unit where there is 24/7 care for each and every individual that's there. If their severity of their mental illness is not such that they need inmate mental health unit, but the step-down unit that we have, they can also be placed in the step-down unit, which allows them a little more flexibility and normal to see the function as they would normally do in the, in the community, but still gives them that care right there on the unit of a psychologist and a psychiatrist and other clinicians that can help with their mental health needs. We also provide group therapy sessions for those individuals that are in their, in our care. If they are sentenced and come into our prison sentence, then they are again assessed based on where they were in pre-trial or in the community. And our mental health providers continue to support whatever their mental health needs are. We provide both what we call watch-take medications where they may have to be called down to our clinics every day and we watch them take their medicine to ensure that they take it. And then some of them are functional enough that we are able to give them their medicines in a blister pack, which they are responsible for taking on a daily basis, but still have to have a direct contact with a provider at least weekly so that they can ensure that the medications are working and that they are functioning. Again, those individuals also take part in group therapy and other type of therapeutic treatments that are deemed appropriate by the mental health provider. We have, our mental health provider is two-part. Some of those, the Director of Mental Health is actually a state employee, which has a, also has a full staff under her. And then because we do have 17,000 incarcerated men and women, we do contract out some of our mental health to the Centurion Group, who has been supportive of us in providing mental health services across the board.
Thank you, Secretary.
I think, I think part of your question was the continuity of care when they get released. So as part, when we know that they're going to be released, before they're released, there is a review done. And as part of that release packet, if we see that they are either on psychotropic medications or have been seeing the mental health provider, they have to see them again before they get released. We make sure we give them that 60-day supply of their medications for them to take and we connect them to a provider in the community so that they can continue their care.
Got it. You mentioned we do a mental health assessment on intake or pre-trial. Do we do one upon leaving or before leaving?
That's, that's the continuity of care assessment that is done. So that, at that point, reviews what type of medications, psychotropic medications, if any, have you been on? What is your current mental health state? Is there a need to IP you? Because we, we know that it's a mandatory release and we have no control of that release. Is there a need to make a recommendation that is a condition of your parole or probation, that you stay engaged in mental health program? So we work in conjunction with all of the providers to make sure that we're touching everyone that we, we know while they were incarcerated had some type of challenge.
Awesome. Thank you. And then my last question is not related, but, and I think we talked about this before. What is the current recidivism rate for Baltimore City?
Specifically Baltimore City. I don't have that in front of me, but I will, I will get that to you.
If you could provide maybe the trend over the last five years, that would be super helpful. Do you, do you know what it is for the state by chance?
I don't know off the top of my head. I don't want to quote because it's old numbers. So I want to get you the updated numbers. I want to get you.
I appreciate that.
But I will, I'll add that to you.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions from the committee? Yeah. Secretary Scruggs, I really, really, really thank you. I know this, this hearing has been a long time coming. We talked about this months and months and months ago when you first came on and I really, really appreciate the insight that you provided for our city agencies and, you know, the hard work you guys put into just kind of helping us understand the full scope of this. I think there's a lot of work we still have to do here. And whatever we can do to better coordinate our efforts at the city level with the efforts at the state level, I think we can just really begin to see better returns. And, you know, I think the council is eager to be helpful on this issue as evidenced by the efforts that Councilman Torrance has been putting forward and certainly this committee's attention to the issue. So with that, with no further questions, this hearing is in recess and I will see you guys soon. Thank you.